Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV: Keeping Government Honest.
Thank you all for being here. I think we have occasion to be exact so soon. I haven't had hardly any chance to work on any material, so my opening is somewhat familiar to you, but there are certain things I require to cover in opening a town meeting. I'm David Ross, the moderator, and I call this special meeting of the town and school district of Grafton to order. As moderator, my role is to run a fair and orderly meeting and help you accomplish the business before you tonight. If at any point you feel you don't understand what is happening or how to do something, stand up or raise your hand, get my attention, and tell me so that I can try to assist you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the laws of the state of Vermont and Robert's Rules of Order. The body can overrule Robert's Rules of Order and the moderator, but not state law. Please be respectful of one another. Address comments to the moderator rather than to each other individually by name. Raise your hand to be recognized and then stand and state your name. If there is no objection, I ask that speakers keep their remarks within five minutes. Okay, good. Now, only registered voters of Grafton are allowed to participate in the discussion unless the body acts to suspend the rules to allow otherwise, in which case that person may speak but not vote. Will all those who are not registered Grafton voters please rise? Okay, so now we know who you are. Thank you very much. And you know what the rules are. We have been warned to act on one particular item of business regarding the sale and lease of a school building to the town and then back to the school district. So I must ask that discussion be limited to that issue and not the broader issue of the school merger. After we have dealt with the warned article, then it would be appropriate to take up the merger issue or other issues which are appropriate for us to consider in a non-binding fashion. Okay, are there any questions before we begin? Okay, this is good. Maybe? Special meeting is called to consider Article 1. Sell the town of Grafton by the Grafton Elementary School Building and land possessed by the Grafton School District from that district for $1 and lease said building and land back to the Grafton School District and any successor district for 99 years at $1 per year with the following provisos. One, that the district or its successor district or entity must maintain the building and keep it in any expansion or new building in good repair. And number two, that the building grounds be used for the direct provision of classroom educational services for students resident in at least the town of Grafton, Vermont, with appropriate penalties for its being used for any other purpose that does not include the provision of such direct educational services. Students from adjoining towns, such as but not limited to Athens, Vermont, may share in its use without violating the provision of this agreement. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Norm Roberts. Now, before we start any discussion, we have copies of the motion, and I don't know if they're enough for everybody to go around, but you can share them. And it was in Grafton News beginning of the month. Hopefully some of you have seen it there. So first, Bill Kearns.
Just before we start any discussion, I just want the record to reflect because there've been some question that this meeting was warned according to 17 BSA 2521, warnings and notices, the state law. It was not only posted in all the places that it was required to be posted. It was published in the Rutland Herald on March 9th and ran for the 30-day period that ended yesterday. Today is the 31st day. And also in 2521, it requires us to comply with 2141, which is the posting of the election rolls. And Kim posted those on the front bulletin board. If you've ever looked at, they've been posted the whole month. There is nothing we did to violate that law. It has been completely followed, and this meeting, in our opinion, without a court saying otherwise, is a legal meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Now, is there any discussion on the motion which is on the floor? So we vote to correct the vote?
Yes.
Jack Frye. Jack, in the stand, please.
Yes, thank you. Bill is referring to an unfortunate letter that we got from Stissel and Page earlier today, not a letter I solicited believing, but it does state two things that you should be aware of. One, it claims that the meeting was not properly warned because -- and it also claims that the meeting is being held for an illegal purpose. The illegal purpose in this case is whether or not the town of Grafton can in fact take possession of the building under these circumstances, and they're quoting the Wind of Northeast Elementary School District and the interim articles of agreement that are being proposed for this new unified district. The unified district, in theory, according to the state and according to the SDE, formed as of last November, and as such, there is some question of a title. I don't have any view on this, but I think it's important to be aware that as we proceed tonight, we're going to proceed provisionally because that is at issue. And at least Stissel and Page, who is the attorney, attorneys for the Wind of Northeast Supervisor Union, have objected in writing to the meeting and objected to whether or not the meeting is being held legally. They also have noted something that I take some responsibility for, which is that the notice as written talks about selling, about buying the building, but does not talk about selling it. And therefore, what we have is we can, at least theoretically, make an offer to buy, and we can in fact force an offer to buy, but we can't force an offer to sell. So that means, and since there is a question as to whether or not your school board can sell it, we need that, we were going to have to continue to work that out over the next several days. I hope as we go forward, people know that, aren't annoyed by it, I'm annoyed by it, but they need to be aware that this is some of the constraints under which we're going to operate this evening. So just again, I know Bill and I have different views. He certainly has his. I'm just simply telling you what the letter that I got from Stissel and Page was today and sort of what I got from both the Secretary of State, Office for Municipalities, and what I also got from the Agency of Education, who decided to call me up too.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the motion? Kearns.
I'll let you speak to the motion. I'd like to amend the motion to include the sentence, "For the purposes, for the uses of the building and for municipal use of the premises in accordance with past custom during less than prior ownership of the premises." We've always used it for town meetings and so on, and that's the reason.
Okay, so that's the amendment, and that is on the sheet that's been circulated.
That's on the sheet.
Okay, is there a second for this place? John Kearns? Okay, now, as we have any discussion on the proposed amendment, the maker of the motion normally gets to speak first.
I'd like it to include that because just for clarity that we didn't mean it just for the school, but to be used, basically what we're looking at is the ownership of the school go to the town, but the use of the school remain exactly the same under a lease from the town. And so that being the case, we want to be able to use it for the town, and we want it to be understood that that's our intention.
Thank you. Jack, do you have a comment on that?
You will notice that there are two offered amendments here, and respecting all that, I'm not even sure we can really amend these types of agreements on the floor, but assuming that we can, I've suggested that we use somewhat more vague language so that we can get all this nailed down. We're still in the process of negotiating the t's and i's on this agreement, and I would like to offer that the articles, one in its entirety, be changed, mostly to give everybody a chance to finish our negotiation and also make sure we don't trip over any of the legal objections. And I have asked that the town and school boards authorize, the Grafton School Board and the Grafton Select Board, to purchase and to lease back and further authorize them to negotiate the terms. And the reason for that is we need to find out, A, can we, and B, make certain that what we agree to is not going to violate some state agency's interpretation of what we can and what we cannot do here.
Okay, now, just so we get this clear, and I'm not going to accept that as a motion at this moment. The thing is, do we have an infinity? That's really what we want as--
I would like that substitute.
--so we're making that as amendment now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, amendment. Is it then, and is there a second for that amendment?
I'll say I need a second.
Point of view, Norm Roberts.
Okay, now, we have two amendments. Wait a minute, and I'll try to explain this. What happens is we end up with what's considered a substitute motion. So at this point, we have two motions to consider, one with an amendment pending, which is the original article as warned, and then this other, we do think in as an amendment, but technically is considered a substitute motion. And so we're actually able to discuss both of those, and then we can dispense with one of them through our voting at some appropriate point. So anyway, that's where we are on that. In other words, the floor is open to discussion on both of these issues and remembering that we have a pending amendment on the original article. So, okay. Go.
Don't have an objection to the amendment as offered by Jack Frye. I do have a problem with the characterization is that we need time. I have with me, after working all day today, all day Saturday, the lease and the deed. The lease as they want it written by from their attorney and the lease as we would prefer it written, but our attorney said, if that's what they insist on, then fine. I don't want anybody to think they're voting. I hope that the intent of this is not to delay this two or three days, because we don't have two or three days. Wednesday night, we're done. And we're not acting on this as Jack characterized it provisionally. We are acting on this, and if the court says we did wrong, we did wrong, but we're acting on this. That's what our attorney, that's what my attorney, your attorney, your attorneys told me this afternoon. Go ahead with it. If the court has a problem with it, we'll deal with it then. There's a lot of problems with this letter. They refer to having told the school district March 5th. We didn't even notice this meeting until March 9th. Did they contact us? When did they contact us? Today. They didn't even contact us. They contacted Kim. And so we had no notice of this. So there is a delay to what they did. So our attorney said, go ahead with this meeting, and we'll talk about it later, because we can't take a chance. After Wednesday, we're done. They don't exist anymore, and they can't deed it over. We're done. So my advice is, if you accept this, yes, but then let's discuss those terms, and let's tell the school board and the select board what terms you want, and be done with this thing tonight, because our attorney spent all, she's on vacation in South Carolina, Myrtle Beach. She stayed inside all day to deal with this, with me, and tried to deal with the attorney on the other side, all day.
Okay, can you comment? Can we clarify the importance of Wednesday? Not everyone probably knows the importance of Wednesday. Okay, that's a good issue, and you had this before your particular--
Okay. Wednesday, this meeting that I hope you will all come to, Wednesday is a meeting that is supposed to be the meeting to convene a preliminary discussion about the new successive school district to the Grafton, school district, the Athens school district, et cetera. Now, that meeting may or may not be completed. I actually anticipate the meeting will be adjourned before new business is taken. The meeting by itself will not create a new district. The district already exists, so there is nothing that will come out of that meeting. If you all show up and vote when I'm going to ask you to, if you show up, there will be no action that will change the legal status of anything out of that meeting. Bill has a concern that the new successive district will support what we're trying to do. I'm actually pretty confident they will, and I'm also confident that they will have to get their legal sign off to make this work, but that's what he's talking about. I did not know that Bill had, and they have preliminarily agreed to the terms that we had suggested. That's wonderful, and thank you. I do think, nonetheless, we do need to just quickly agree, and we do need to understand that it still is provisional because the state and Stissel and Page and at least one set of lawyers for the Agency of Education think we cannot do this per the interim articles of agreement that we've not signed yet. Don't know. Personally happy to go forward with this. When we say provisional, it is provisional, and I do need to point out, this, what is this? Our lawyer and their lawyer. You are all members of the Grafton School District. Larry Slason is your lawyer, just as Robin Stern is your lawyer. We have two lawyers who represent all of you, who are trying to work this out, and that's what we've been spending our time on. It's, we're all together in this, and I wanted to make sure that we all remember that as we go forward.
Of course, we all know the old story of the lawyer, the only lawyer in town who started this, until another lawyer poked into town, and then they both did very, very well. So we have two lawyers who are going to have two different opinions, and so on and so forth. So are there any other thoughts to be heard on this issue? Alan Sanders.
Alan Sanders. I'd just like to clarify a statement that was made at the informational meeting Thursday night. Mr. Neuss made the comment that it was the Select Board, Grafton Select Board, wanting to purchase the building, and that's not true. The Grafton Select Board is facilitating this, but we are asking the voters, all of us, to own the building that we already own as our other, as paying taxes for school board. Our concern or our feeling is that if a new district is formed and a merger happens, we would hope that they would appreciate we pay for this building, et cetera. But we don't know that for sure, and for a dollar, we could own this building, at least we feel we own the building, as the taxpayers of Grafton, not as a school district. It doesn't change anything else other than that. So if a few years from now, the new district decides that, well, we need to put an addition onto the Rock, onto the West Minister Building, and when we do that, we'll just sell this building in Grafton that we own and use that money to facilitate that. Would that happen? I don't know. But our feeling is for a dollar, we could own this building, and if we no longer have children here, the voters of Grafton will decide what do we do with the building next. And that's not a discussion to have tonight, but that's a discussion we then can have for future, if it should ever get to that. So that's what's behind it.
Okay. Do you have some other speakers?
I just need to know if we have a friendly--
Yeah. Hi, Jessica Wester. I just have a tiny correction to something Bill said. Even with the transitional board being formed on Wednesday for the new school district, this board does exist till June 30th. So it's, we don't cease to exist on Wednesday. It's just a small point of correction, but I wanted that out there. I don't know what we can do, but we exist.
Okay, are there any other speakers? Okay, this gentleman would like to speak, and you are--
Chris Pratt, Superintendent Schools.
Okay, is there any objection to the pretendant speaking? Hearing none? Sure?
I just wanted to speak on the amendments to the articles. It's my understanding from what I've been told that you cannot amend, state law does not allow us to amend the articles as written--
That's not true.
--in the paper. So I just want to put that up where I thought--
We can't, we can't substitute seeing a dump truck or a bulldozer, that kind of thing, but within the framework of what was warned, amendments are allowed. Thank you. But it's good to raise that question. The worst that would happen is the voters could decide on something, and then somebody takes us to court or something like that, which has been alluded to already, politically in one way or another. But otherwise, amendments that are within the realm of what was warned are acceptable here. Okay. Yep. Any other comments? Are there any new speakers on this? Okay, Jack?
I just needed a point of order to note, I just need your notes, but point of order. It sounds like Bill has accepted our article of substitution with the understanding that we get right along with this if we're going to do this, maybe even tonight or next day or so. And I don't personally have an objection to that, but I want to know if that's, what the status of that amendment is at this point.
Okay. The way I would proceed is to vote on that amendment and see where we should want to go with that. And then if that failed, then we would go back to the original amendment proposed and then that motion. Which for me-- People will-- Here, this will help us out. Mary Carver, back, please.
I have a couple of questions for myself, I guess, I'd like clarification on. The first one is, as I'm reading the articles of agreement for the school board that I think is supposed to be formed on Wednesday for the state, it sounds like under that agreement, the town would still have kind of first purchase options to buy the building back, which I think is important. But I'm also curious, if at some time in the future, if we do buy the building and then lease it back to the school boards, if at some point we wanted to pull out altogether and do something entirely different, how would we break the lease with the new school board? My question is.
Okay, so questions, did everybody hear the question? Okay, Bill, you think you have an answer to that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. It's all well and good that the articles say it comes to us if they don't have children in the school, or, and you got to read the or, other uses of the building. Throughout the state, the people have given up their schools to consolidation, and they're full of books. Okay, so they can use this forever. They can move all their offices over here, they can do anything. What the intent, the intent was, as long as you're using this school, it remains exactly as long as it's just like it is now, then it stays, you know, just like that. And the second part of your question was--
If they want to break the lease.
Oh, they want, no, the lease is forever. As long as--
But if we as a town wanted to break the lease and do--
We can't.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute. Under 16 BSA 562, you as the voters, the electors of the school district, can tell the district to sell the school, then you as the, you can tell them that you don't, you want them to move out of the school, that you don't want them to lease another building, this, you want to lease this building over here. You want to lease the cheese factory, put the kids down there, and then you as the electors can say, now, let us select what we want you to sell the building. But it's the same people that have to break the lease. It's you. It's you guys. 562 says you decide what's leased, where the kids are going to school is up to you. They are required by 563 to put them in the school that you say you want them to go to, and they have to take care of it. Okay, that's the, that's the rule.
Thank you, Bill. I can get over to you, Matt.
Eric, would you refer into Article 4 in the A section? Because that would be a new district, a new side, a new district, which would then West Minister and Grafton would have given permission to sell it back, and voters are well aware of the two towns of Athens and Dallas. And so many--
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
I have--
Okay, let me go to Alan for a suggestion.
I thought perhaps the question Mary Bent was asking about was in the future, if we decided that perhaps we want to become a private school here, like a campus school only being right here in town. So I think the lease would allow us to do that in the future, right? If the voters of Grafton, at some point in the future--
Not if, not if the school district cares. Their lease, they have to break the lease.
No. All right, I see.
If we lease it for 100 years, we're bound for 100 years.
All right, first Jessa and then Kim.
So to Mary Bent's point, we need to hold articles of agreement as put out by the state. If you look through the duties of the transitional board and the new board, those can be modified before they're adopted. So that isn't necessarily the language that we'd be in the new articles of agreement. It can be changed. We don't know if it will, or, we don't know anything about how that's going to happen. Those are available on the SU website, if you go to the dog section, and they would be ready for everybody to read. But yeah, they're not adopted yet, so.
Thank you. Kim, it's kitchen.
Kind of to Mary Bent's point, Article 1 says lease said building and land back to the Grafton School District for 99 years at $1 per year. Could that be amended to say for up to 99 years at the discretion of the voters of Grafton to allow us the possibility to pull out if the school district didn't have?
Jack?
I'd be opposed to that with every fiber of my being, and I will tell you why. Building has been paid for by the voters-- Building has been paid for by the voters of the district, the school district of Grafton. This has also been paid in large part over the last ten years by the voter, by the citizens of the school district of Athens. This is the Athens-Grafton Joint School District. We work together, we're partners, we've been partners for decades. They have an interest in this too. One of my concerns about this whole thing was it assumed that somehow Athens, because Grafton, because we're the titular holder of the lease, or of the deed, are somehow able to ignore Grafton, uh, ignore Athens, and that somehow, and I can't figure this out, that Westminster is supposed to be our enemy. Let me be very clear, that for every dollar that this town has spent trying to consolidate, Westminster on our behalf has spent ten. They have been our principal ally in making certain that our rights are preserved, almost to an embarrassment. The point, well, the, the point simply is that I, it would be absolutely unconscionable for us to take the building and then, that we had promised to our public school students and walk away with it to give to a private school or to a real estate developer or some other thing. That is not, that is not what we would ever as a school board agreed to. Just got to tell you, never have we agreed that. This is a public school facility for the benefit of our children.
Okay. Is there any discussion in terms of the issue before us? So are we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if there's no objection, then we will proceed. And as I said before, uh, we'll vote on the last amendment presented, which in essence replaces the original article. So is that clear to everybody? So the last amendment, which was presented by, uh, Jack, uh, shall the town and school districts of Grafton, Vermont authorize the Grafton School Board to sell and the Grafton Select Board to purchase the Grafton Elementary School Building and grounds to the town of Grafton for an amount not to exceed one dollar, and further authorize them to negotiate a lease-back arrangement to the benefit of our community citizens and children? Okay? So that's what we're voting on.
So if we, if we are to vote on this?
Yes.
And if it is to pass?
Yes.
Then we would not vote on the amendment?
That's correct. Well, this would become the new motion because it's a, it's a substitute, it was intended as amendment, but it becomes a substitute motion in terms of Parler's Rules. And so we're going to choose between these...
So, so if that was to happen?
Yeah.
We would never get to here or, or understand what, what the agreement was that, uh, the town attorney worked out in the lease?
Well, that's, well...
That'll happen in the future?
That's the original article that was before us, and presumably that's what the opportunities for discussion were to provide for. So if we're satisfied with that, then, uh, so if you're in favor, it's, it's one or the other. So if you vote in favor of this amendment that I just read, then we're done.
Okay. So if we vote against this one?
That's correct. Then we go back to the amendment that was presented, and then the original article as amended. Okay. We want... Okay, we're not discussing it. We're just asking, okay?
Okay. Point of order. How do we get, how do we get to a discussion of what I spent all day working on, which is a negotiated lease between the two of them, and a discussion so that they know what we have been discussing in the lease, and can make a decision to tell the school board and to tell the select board what it is that these people want us, want the town and the school to do. What, if, if, if either article can get us there, then I don't care. That's where I want to get. So I'm asking you, how do we get there?
Okay. Well, first off, the original article, uh, covers various aspects of a lease. The amendment is a very simplified, uh, version of that, and then that would be left to, uh, I presume the select board then to negotiate and set up the lease, rather than doing it in a, in a, like this. Yeah?
Okay. We, we do have already noticed legally, a school board meeting and a select board meeting right now, right after this meeting, right here.
Yeah.
And if that is the case, and everybody wants to stay for those two meetings, we could do that, I just want them the opportunity to hear what, what was going on.
Point of order.
Yeah?
At this point, can we ask to, uh, hear the lease that has been worked out by the town administrator and the town attorney?
All right.
Before we, before we vote, so that we understand?
I'm not su, well, if you really want to. I'm not sure that that's for me. We wouldn't be hearing that lease if we were voting on the original article, unless it had been brought up in the discussion. An ample opportunity has been provided to bring that up in the discussion, and it hasn't happened. Right? So you're trying to say that if we were to vote on the original article, then we would then be voting on the lease? Well, no, because we haven't been warned to vote on the lease, other than what's aspects of the, uh, lease are, are in the original article. Right? Okay. So therefore, we're going to vote on the amendment. And if that amendment passes, then our work for this evening is accomplished as far as I can see in terms of what we would warrant to do. If you vote it down, then we go back to the original article and amendment proposed for that. Mary, go.
Since the lease is mentioned both in the original, uh, warning and in the, the amended one, and we haven't voted on anything yet, can the discussion of the proposed leasing ideas be discussed?
Well, that's what we spent the last forty-five minutes presumably going, was having that opportunity.
Not, not the, the lease, the whole...
Well, the lease itself wasn't warned. The lease, lease itself was not warned for us to discuss. And, uh, you know, I'm not sure how appropriate it is for us to do that. I think this body could act on what was warned. And then it's left to the proper authorities, which would be the, uh, select board and school board then to work out the, uh, the technical arrangements on that. All right. We'll take one more, and then we're going to do something else there. Kim?
If the lease isn't under discussion, why did Mr. Breyer hand out a lease for people to you?
That was what he felt he wanted to share with you. All right. Am I wrong here? Uh, are we still going to go ahead and vote as I proposed? All right. Uh, can I have a quick show of hands? Let's do it, let's do it. Those who want to move ahead and vote on the amendment, uh, just raise your hand so I can see here where we are.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
This is vote. I just want to try out if we're still, you know, if there's something nagging feeling and we continue, we're missing something in our discussion, and I just want to clear this up for my own sake. So I think it's a lot of you that do not actually want to go ahead on a vote on this amendment at this point. Is that right? That's what you just told me. The law was our duty.
Yeah.
All right. Well, tell me where you're confused, and I don't want to hear any more of Phil and Jack on this. I want to hear some... Tell me how you're confused.
I was like, for a false beginning, and tell me what exactly am I voting on at this moment?
Okay. What, what we are voting on, the last amendment that was proposed, proposed by Jack Breyer is at the bottom of the sheet, and that's what I just read. Okay? And that is, uh, authorization for the town and the school district to, uh, sell the school to the town, and the town, uh, then to lease it back to a school district.
Without all the provision?
Now, this amendment doesn't have all the provisions that were in the original article. Yeah, Nancy?
So do I, Nancy Merrill, do I understand that, that we vote for the last amendment on the bottom?
Yeah.
Of Jack Breyer's, that instead of our taxpayers voting, it's up to the school board and the select board to work this out?
That's right.
Not this anyway.
That's, that would be the attempt.
And the difference is, is that versus tonight just voting for it, the, or not, the, the amendment and the, the original thing and the amendment as proposed by Dale?
In essence, there are two motions on the floor, okay? One is the original article that's warned with, with the proviso for an amendment to that.
Okay.
And another amendment which, which replaced the original one, that is a simplified version of the session.
Okay.
And so that's what, I'm going to take these in the, in the order that they were last presented. So the last amendment would come first.
Right.
But under parliamentary terms, uh, because this replaces the original motion, technically that becomes what's called a substitute motion. So then we have to choose between one of them, is the way it comes.
But basically, then it's the second one that is going to be voted on first, puts it in the hands of the school board and the select board.
So this is the first one?
Instead of, does it?
Yes. But it doesn't have all the terms and, and the other language in it.
Okay.
But, oh, the original article or the amended article also puts it into the hands of the select board and school board.
That's right.
Okay. Somehow I understand.
Essentially, it sees the same purpose.
Clarify. So, that's your idea? Thanks.
Just a point of order, which was presented. Just point of information. Part, part of the reason for this change was the language in the original wasn't as clear about what the duties of the school board were as they could be. Here, you're essentially authorizing us to do something. In the original, that wasn't as clear. We're really trying to make this simpler, and that's already part of the intent of the substitute amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary, any?
Uh, the original amendment and whatnot has been reviewed by our turn, is that correct? Has the second amendment been looked at by our turn at all?
Bill stated at the beginning it had, and they had no objection.
So either one, Robin was fine?
That's what Bill stated at the outset of the meeting.
Can I speak? May I speak? May I speak?
Sure.
We have no problem with it, with the understanding, we're going to do something tonight. I would offer an amendment to it to say, provided they meet tonight and finish the negotiation, and provided that we are, be allowed to, you guys be allowed to ask us what's in the, what's in the lease, you know? Because you're going to tell that us to negotiate it, what do you want in the lease? I mean, it's a very simple lease, but there are two things in it that there was some disagreement about, and that's all. And so it, I would rather it be amended to say, provided that they negotiate tonight. We only have tonight. We don't have after tonight. Wednesday, Wednesday we're done. Now, they keep saying that, that we don't know. No, we, yes, we don't know what our legal status is, but we do know that on Wednesday, they're voting on and setting up this district.
I have a question. It's half a four inch question. The first article, the original article as written with an amendment, that still includes the original article as written, and the way it is written, it only is authorizing the town side of it, the town to purchase, and the town to engage in a lease. It doesn't mention authorization for allowing, authorizing the school board to sell and engage in a lease. I don't think, I think we have to go with it. If you, if we're allowed to do a substitute article, we have to go with that. Otherwise, nobody can vote tonight to authorize the school board to actually sell the building because that's not how that article is written.
Mr. Moderator. There was a motion on the floor. You can hold for a second. I second the motion that the negotiation would be done.
Okay. So that would become an amendment to the amendment. We could do, we could do that. We could do that. All right. So, uh, so the amendment which we're about to vote on, the substitute motion, uh, would be amended to say what? Go.
Um, in essence, that, um, that we, that the select board and school board negotiate the lease, is that the, the seed base?
Okay. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Who's second? I made it.
All right. Okay. All right.
Is the select board in session? Can they do that?
Yes. We have a special, we have a special meeting.
All right. All right. So we have an amendment before us now, which is to tie, if not place, in terms of when this, uh, the negotiation would take place. Okay? So unless there's any objection, I'd like to go ahead and vote on the amendment to this substitute motion, that the negotiations occur tonight. Okay? All in favor? Please, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. So would appear the ayes have it? The ayes do have it, the amendment passed. All right. Now let's vote on the substitute, uh, motion as amended. Uh, and do I need to read it again, or does everybody have that?
Yeah. Some people need to know the question.
Okay. All right. So what we're voting on now is this, shall the town and school districts of Grafton, Vermont authorize the Grafton School Board to sell and the Grafton Select Board to purchase the Grafton Elementary School Building and grounds to the town of Grafton for an amount not to exceed one dollar, and further authorize them to negotiate a lease-back arrangement to the benefit of our community citizens and children with negotiations...
Take place.
Starting now.
Me and the Congress.
Uh, to take place, uh, following this meeting. Okay?
Point of information. Is it the select board? Is that the proper language?
Well, it'd be the town and the school districts, which I believe are represented by the select board.
Correct.
So that's, which is what, you know? Okay. So now, all right, all in favor of this motion, the substitute motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is passed. Okay. Now, before they run off and negotiate, uh, and I want to thank the Board of Education, the Select Board, Bill as town administrator, uh, for all of their efforts on this. I know it's been very confusing and, and, uh, with a lot of discussions over, over the weekend, even throughout the day today, uh, trying to figure out how best to deal with this and present it to you. So with that, then we can move on to Article two, which is to transact any other non-binding business that may legally come before the town and the Grafton School District meeting. And is there anything there? Jack Breyer?
We've talked a lot about what's going to happen to this school district. We've talked a lot, we've, people have been talking about what Act forty-six does and doesn't. In just a couple of days, there'll be a meeting at six o'clock on April tenth in Bellis Falls Union High School. The people who show up get to decide what the new district looks like, how it's governed, how it's structured, and there's enough people here, if they show up, they'll get to make all those decisions. So I'm hoping you all will. Uh, we really need your participation. Uh, I'm hoping that we may in fact be able to throw a monkey wrench in the process so that we force the AG to rule in the conditions of the Agency of Education, but we need you there. Uh, this is, this is where you get to, this is where you get to decide what happens to our community, uh, and our school district and our school, so I'm hoping you'll show up. Thank you.
Okay. And if you want to do anything to this? Okay, and if you wanna do anything to this?
I, I think we've covered, that would have been a lot clearer, but instead we did it this way.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Bill, we have, we have another issue that is gonna affect the citizens of the town.
Yep.
And since we have a good representation here, Bill will explain the Walker Bridge and the issues that we are now facing.
Okay, Walker Bridge?
I'll make it really, really short, I hope. We were initially called about a month ago to say that we had two choices, a four million dollar bridge that would cost us four hundred thousand dollars, and there'd be a bypass during the construction. It costs, the town share would be four hundred thousand. If they build it ten years from now, forget about those numbers, okay? But that's what they're saying right now. The second, our alternative was a fifty percent discount in the price of the bridge if we had it rehabbed, and just build the top of it, take the girders off, expand the beam and build everything on top, and, and another fifty percent off if we did not, that would be a two million dollar bridge, our share being, being, uh...
Hundred.
A hundred thousand. And then another fifty percent off if we didn't have any bypass at all for the ninety day construction, hoping that they could do it in less, uh, the, yeah, no, sixty day construction, hoping they could do it in forty five days. That's, that's off the table. They have redone the thing because FEMA has requirements for flood. If they build that bridge, they're not following their own standards, and then we have another, we're in trouble when we try to replace stuff that they won't allow us to upgrade stuff that we've replaced. So it's now a four, a four million dollar bridge, and, and they're offering us fifty percent off with no bypass during the summer for a hundred and twenty days. In both those cases, we, we talked to them about having a report so that the, that the farm vehicles can go around, but it'd just be a rough four if we had that. I don't think you'd send a hundred and twenty days, but they have agreed to come to the Select Board meeting in the middle of May, but I think we would rather have a public hearing and have everybody here from B Trans, A and R, all, all the agencies that have trucking in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so that we hear everybody's concern, so we know the real consequences of not having a bypass. It looks like we're gonna have to pay the four hundred thousand, you know, paying back would be a lot more in three years. I just wanted to let you know that. Right now, they have agreed to come in March, on May 20th, but it'll probably be sometime later. So I just wanted to know, have you all aware of that's going on? Thank you.
Okay, are any comments or questions relative to that? Eric Stevens, since this bridge is in my nori yard, so to speak, I was wondering if the other option that FEMA would not allow would have a possibility of redecking the bridge, say, two to three feet higher, using the same abutments and thus lowering our cost.
It's not, the height, it's the width.
It's hydrodynamic, which is width, not height.
Right, so it's not feasible, so you have to have no choice but have it.
Okay, Maureen?
Without the bypass, doesn't it put citizens, the fire trucks, the fire trucks cannot go over, so therefore again?
In my opinion, that's a minor concern. The, the, how many, close a hundred and twenty days from June until September? Think about it. That's impossible.
Minor, wait, can I, because I'm on the other side of that bridge. It's not minor, hold on.
Maureen, please.
Um, being a citizen, on the other side of the bridge, that has a child that might need, um, emergency access, or we have a fire, um, the fire trucks now have to go up and around to get.
Don't misunderstand me. That's only, it's minor, because that's only one concern. There's trucks, there's the farmer, there's that.
Right.
There's, there's everything. That's just one little tiny piece of it that's very, very important. That's what I'm saying. We can't do without it with a hundred and twenty. Oh, no, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's just one little thing. I mean, just think of all this stuff. I mean, Eric had to drive there around the world to get to a fire station.
So his point was, that's not just one little thing, but there are many, many things of which that's all.
Okay.
Jim?
On to that point, is there any chance that we can investigate prior to that, meaning Saxon's River could pitch in, and we could have rescue and fire things cover that? I mean, that's something to investigate prior.
So, this is way too complicated. They're having a hard time, I will say, not for a discussion.
Right, but just so you know, in general, I can interject, if, either with fire or rescue, our people have difficulty responding, either because of lack of personnel or anything that could be going, our dispatch automatically goes to other departments to respond, personnel equipment. So, I mean, there's already in place a system somewhat that would recognize, not specifically for this, but in general. Is that a fair statement? Yes, thank you. All right, but obviously, there's more to be said and considered on this matter relative to emergency access and so on. Is there anything else?
Is there a timeframe given on when construction?
No, no, it couldn't, it'd be years before they even begin. We don't know. We have no idea. They don't have an idea. No, they're coming to the town at the, probably sometime in May, maybe in June, if they have this public meeting that they're gonna, that when the regional actually commission will put together and have everybody meet, they're gonna come to town and they may have an idea then, but I would guess they don't know. Because they, they have a, a bridge in the town, and the town says, we can't afford it. They'll say, okay, Grafton Church. Or somebody's bridge came in the year before, it's our turn, guess what? We don't get it, they get. You know, so it's all that stuff.
Okay, with that, and I was gonna say, well, we'll see you in March, but it's, I suppose, possible relative to the school district elected or something command, I mean, then somewhere along the line, I don't know how that all works, but otherwise, if there's nothing else, and if there's no objection, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
We're gonna have the Select Board meeting, and we'd really appreciate if you'd stay for the first part of the...
I guess it's a joint meeting, I would show more...
You're gonna call your meeting out of order. I'm gonna call mine meeting out of recess, and we will continue the meeting at the start at six forty-five. So why don't we give it that way? We, you want to call yours, I'll call mine.
Okay, so I call the special Selective meeting to order.
And I call the Grafton School District meeting out of recess and back into order at, what time is it, Joe?
Eight seventeen.
Sure, one up. And, and the subject will be the discussion of the proposed lease that has been developed, and we have both, our lawyer Larry Sluson of, 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 something that I know so much, and, and through the advice of Lawrence Stern, the town attorney for, for the town of Grafton.
As I understand it, we have two leases, that are not the same, they accomplish the same thing. And they are to, we are to negotiate or talk about which lease we would, you would like, and the select board would like, as I understand it.
I don't see one of them to update.
The one with the red is the lease that comes from Lawrence Stern. The one way out is the lease that came from Larry Sluson or whoever.
Oh, okay.
I have one of Jen's red ones, because I haven't had...
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I, yeah, I don't think so.
As I understand it, with the pair of, your lease contains item five with an economic impact adjustment.
Is that correct?
Robin Stern would like to see it out, and what's the other one?
Nine.
Nine is written differently in Robin, only to include, because five is taken out, only to include the provision that makes it clear that if the children aren't here, that is a violation of lease and therefore the lease terminates.
So as I understand it, all the other, all the others are the same, so then what we can really discuss is five and none? Because those, those are the only differences in the two leases, not the lease.
I, 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 we'll stipulate that at least for the moment. I want to, because I don't know what, you've got a five reserved.
But she doesn't, she wants it eliminated completely.
Uh, the economic, thank you. All right, to, let's start with the default position. This is Article Nine, in those versions. Now, I wanted to be very clear, one thing about this, is this, this provision is probably moot, and the reason it's moot is because the interim articles of agreement, the guidance from the State Department of Education, the guidance from the states, uh, from the, the Secretary of State's office, from municipalities, among others, that we've talked to, all say the same thing, which is that should the building not be used, that the building potentially be not, not used as a school, not used, period, that the town would have the right to buy the building for a dollar.
That's incorrect.
Well, let me, I'm just giving you the language that I was given that is an argument that you're absolutely welcome to have with...
No, 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 it is an argument. Please, please talk about the article correctly. It says, or other use for the district. It says that in the article right now, unamended.
Hang on a second.
We're gonna get off that track.
We're gonna pull up on that.
And your attorney said, yes, in one of the emails I'm finding, yes, I missed that. And in fact, that's why it's important that this is done, this meeting and this transaction is done immediately. Your attorney said that, because that, because he was mistaken on that article.
Well, just let me read to you what it said, what's this one page, which is, which wrote this as the direction of the Secretary of State's office, and I can only, and we can debate it, but we just read it in each page. It says, in particular, this article requires the W N U S D D, that's provisional...
Wait, 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 you're reporting a letter. I want you to quote the article, because that letter is as mistaken as you are. That's the problem, Jack.
I, we can debate that, but we...
No, no, we can debate it. Look at the article. The article is what, not what this purpose is in saying.
I, you know, one of the things we should never do, is we, as we're working together, is we should never cut the other person off.
Is misinform, is misinforming the people what we're doing.
I am not, you can argue with us.
Okay, read, read the article.
Let me read to you this page, which is all I said I was going to do. Then we can go and we can refer to the article and see if it's correct. That seems reasonable.
No, read the article.
Please, I'm begging you.
No, I'm begging you. Please, read the article. That's what's important, that's what you're referring to. Let's read, let's read the article first, and then we can look.
I'm trying to find a printed copy, but I have the William Norrie Lee Station Elementary School District Articles of the Runway.
Thank you.
I believe they're from February twenty eighth, is that? All right. All right, so bring us down to, are you talking about Article Four, the closure of, are you talking about the closure of schools or six, the transfer of property?
Four and six.
Okay. Article Four. The first two academic years, and academic years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty twenty-one, the new union district shall not close the new school building conveyed to the new union district by a forming district, or cease using the buildings provided direct education in at least one grade, pre-kindergarten through grade eight, unless first approved by voters residing in the town or towns in which the school is located. Provided, however, that if the school building is conveyed by a forming district that's already a union school district, the new district shall not close, and will not approve the union district. So down to number six. This is Article Six. A is transferring property to the new union district by June thirty of twenty nineteen. B, subsequent sale of real property to the town in which it is located in any year in the future. Subject to any requirements relating to school building closure, Article Four, and to the sale of buildings of Title sixteen or any other title of the law statutes indicated, if the new union district board determines in its discretion that the real property, including land and buildings, conveyed to it by one or more of the forming districts, will not be used for direct delivery of education in at least one grade, or for any other purpose related to the operation of the new union districts. So for any other, administrative building, what have you, is an acceptable use, in addition to our concern. That's the, the part you were...
For what it's worth, we plan to have that excised in the Articles Agreement, should we get them to do that stage even this coming, we did mark that out. I sort of have been working on the assumption that there'd be absolutely no reason, God's green earth, that would, there'd be any objection to that. So we get back to the issue of, if that assumption is correct, then to some extent, the, the concern is somewhat moot. Yes, theoretically, many things could happen, a border breakout, but I'm lacking that. We're, we're fairly confident, in fact, incredibly confident, that that's not gonna be a real problem here. So as I said, we believe that the, the language here, well, truly nice to have is not really a concern.
I don't care about that. I care about, like, what I care about is the difference between five and the one, and not having five. That's the real issue. That is the only sticking issue since Friday morning. Only sticking.
All right, so then we are increment that the language is not, there is no problem with our language on nine?
No, if we take five out, we want the mid-length.
Then let's, let's move to nine. What is nine, what is five? What does five say? Five, there is a provisional law that says that you can't, you cannot exact a penalty for break, you cannot be punitive if a lease is broken, but you can recover damages should a lease be broken. It was our concern, and that we want to ensure that no future district or the state forced us to walk away from the provision of public education in our community. We thought that was a unanimous view of everyone here. So then, if that is the unanimous view, how do we get there? What can we do? Simply saying, we will take the building. Well, the bill, if, if this happened, they'd be, they'd be giving you the building, so it's not for a dollar anyway, so it's not really an issue. So if they're gonna give you the building, taking control of the building isn't a penalty, is it? So what do we do to ensure that in 2050, there is still an operating elementary school teaching kids in this building? Well, what you have to do, if you can't punish somebody for breaking the lease, you can exact compensation. And that compensation can be substantial. How much damage would happen to this community if we lost the school? I think everybody would agree it'd be very substantial. Would it be damages to our children? I think we'd agree that it would be substantial, because you're now shipping kids to, out of, out of our district, back into another half of our district halfway to, that's crazy. That's, that's real damage. It damages everybody that owns the property in this community, because it really means you're never gonna sell a house to parents of a school age kid, because who would do that? So, given that fact, how do we seek, and how we put into code, into the agreement, an acknowledgement that there is damages to our community should this building ever be closed? That is the purpose of the economic impact adjustment, which is a lawyerly way of saying, we're hurt if this school closes, and we want something for it, not just the building. We have taxpayers, we have homeowners, we have kids that will be hurt by that, and they're gonna be hurt substantially by that. So what can we do to make certain that A, the place never closes, and if it does, that we, as a community, are compensating? That's what, that is what number five is there for. It is a legal and fairly common, as I've learned, type of provision in commercial leases. So what it says here is, if the building ceases to be used as a school, there would be an... is if the building ceases to be used as a school, there would be an economic impact to our kids and to our community, and we get to change the terms of the lease. Don't just get the building, because you have the building. You get to change the terms of the amount. The terms of the amount change to $10,000 a month for 30 months. $300,000 is what it would cost a future district or the state to close this school. Now, I'm baffled by why anyone would think that's a bad thing for this town. It would mean that either the state or this new district would have to pay, or some successive district, maybe it goes all the way to Rattle Grove someday, who knows, would have to pay 300, would have to pay essentially $300,000 to get out of the lease.
Jack, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think what we're, we're trying to do is make a lease with the Grafton School District, so they can continue to operate the building as is.
Yep. That's what we're doing here.
Once it is no longer being run by the Grafton School District, they're going, whoever then runs the school has to make a lease with the voters of Grafton.
This lease will be.
So, so, so that's the time that you talk about this kind of.
Unfortunately, that's not the case. This, this lease will be binding on the new entity. Any, any contract signed today by the, by Act 46, and frankly, by longstanding law, will be binding on the new entity. So the new entity, if it forms on next week, or if it forms in July, if it never forms, is the same. So what we're trying to do is put a way of protecting Grafton kids and voters and taxpayers for the impact on them. That's it?
Yep. The only response to that, and this is pretty simple, is our attorney has no problem, no serious issue with this, but she prefers it's not in there because of the unknowns. We've already talked tonight about all the unknowns. Do we even have the authority to do it? We're going ahead, saying we have the authority. Let the court say we don't.
Yep.
Okay. What she would like, what she says is, without this in there, we might fly under the radar and they might not buoy the deed to the town. And therefore, if and when the kids move out here and, and the school is no longer a use for educational purposes, the town will at least have the property. And, but, she also says, with this punitive thing in here, they may come after us and, and do it. So that's why she would rather do it. However, however, we all applaud, and I think we're all in favor, as I told people that, where, where Marianne and I come from, the little school that my kids went to was 60 kids, six grades, 10 kids in each grade, and we fought to keep that alive forever from the same pressures that you have now in California. And it was only because our kids, all of them, performed so much better in the middle school than the kids that came from the big school over there, that they kept it open. But after a while, they finally said the money wasn't enough and they closed it. So, I identify with keeping it. If this were, the attorney just doesn't think this will work. However, she says, if this is what everybody wants, then fine. But she's afraid it makes us a target, a more of a target than we already are.
Okay, I don't, I'm not monopolizing you this time, sure I am. Uh, it's stopping. The, um, the, the, one of the things we spent a lot of time with, and I spent time with Mark Ottinger, who used to be the, uh, used to be the attorney for, for the Agency of Education, I spent time with the Alliance folks, spent time with Larry Slayson, spent time with, with my family, who are just full of lawyers and all think they have an opinion on this sort of stuff, was the difference between what is called, this is Arcania, what is called a punitive provision, which you can't do, punitive is illegal, and a compensatory provision, which is. And we spent a lot of time, and Larry went to all of his other legal associates, we all spent a lot of time specifically trying to immunize this provision against attack. I gotta tell you, it's the least of our problems with this, because we had a question about whether or not what standing Athens has in this. We have a standing about a ruling from the state saying that we can't do this, period. We have all sorts of people telling us we can't do it. If we can do it at all, let's just put this in, would be my recommendation. It's not, if, if we decide that that's going to be a problem, if later on we find that we're having trouble with it, the, you guys and either us or our successors, I mean, we'll just pencil that out. Right for now, I'd like it in, because it's really the one, the only guarantee I have, and it's not a good one, but it's the best I got, that we can keep the school up and come what may.
I have a different opinion. And that is, and I agree, there are probably many hurdles that we are going to face. Who knows what the state is going to do? But you're adding one more. And when they see $300,000, they're going to get upset with it, and they're going to go after it even harder.
I'd rather just buy them.
So I, I would personally, I am not in favor of five, personally.
We've, we've heard a lot from Jack. We haven't heard a word from the rest of the, of the school board.
Sorry about that, I told you.
Can't say sorry. Will let me go first? Okay. First of all, the chances of us flying under the radar, that's long enough. We are under the radar. But I disagree with Jack. Undoubtedly, we're going to court over this. Somebody's going to complain that this vote was not legal, we're not allowed to, and it's not our school anymore anyway. But if we're going to go to court over the vote, let's not go to court with a contested lease. I think, keep this very simple, because this lease also, as we tried to explain to a lot of people here tonight, this has nothing to do with Act 46, this has nothing to do with force majeure, it is not, it has nothing to do with that. The lease should have nothing to do with that, the sale. This is a simple real estate transaction between two public entities, and I would like to keep it as such. And it also discusses, you know, all additional legal and equitable remedies available, reasonable and reflecting the adverse economic impact, including housing prices, reduction of taxes, economic by telling. This is in the town's motion. I will be careful removing that we
Do we have any comment here from, from the?
Well, let's, let's first let the rest of the school board speak.
Um, I actually, I'm, you know, I, I respect you, Jack, but I am also in the same camp as Jessa. I once had a theater professor tell me, stupid anything, it's kiss, keep it simple, stupid. And I feel adding this will, um, complicate matters. So I actually also agree with the town's.
Do you have something to say?
Um, I, I, I want to, I want to keep it as simple as possible as well. I'm fine with removing five. Um, I, I don't know how it would impact a lot of our funding. In the end, that, that makes me very nervous if in actuality we are doing what we are here to do, which is take care of our kids. I'm afraid that that might impact grants, other funding, um, and I'm not sure that that's how, um, you get things done. Um, I do want to talk a little bit about whether or not we sign anything tonight, though. I mean, I understand that we might, we might intend to sign things tonight, but is it important for us to? I don't know that I agree with you, Bill, in saying that we have to do this by Wednesday. So I just want to understand why. So I, 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 I'm cool with this version, and I believe that keeping it without the provision of a five is, is the way to go, in my opinion. But signing a lease tonight, I, I don't know that I agree with that. And I want to know why we feel as though we're over on Wednesday.
I feel it's over, that it, I feel it may be over now. I read everything Larry Slayson wrote. I even wrote, read his email that says, "It's important that you do it now."
But I don't know why. I'm just asking why.
Because, because we don't know, we don't know the legal status, and we don't know the legal status after Wednesday, but we know that the legal status is more, uh, solid after Wednesday. And right now, you guys are your own district, because otherwise you wouldn't be needing to form a new district.
Well, I believe, though, that we have an opportunity to.
Yeah.
Who knows?
I, I think we do.
Larry, Larry doesn't know, Robin doesn't know, no one knows. That's why we want it done now.
I'm also, I'm also concerned, since I'm actually the chairman of the Joint Board in Athens, um, I, I, without bringing advantage to the discussion, even though it is a Grafton building, I feel like we are doing this a disservice.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
If, if, if Athens has an interest in the building, we are not asking for a warranty deed. We, we look at our deed records. Our deed records show it's in the Grafton School. I have the title all the way back to 1866, when it was moved here from Main Street, from the two schools in Main Street, it was consolidated here. We have that deed, we have another deed from Mrs. Perry in 1925, and we have the two deeds from the Wyndham Foundation, when he was on the board and they built the school. And it's all to the Grafton School District, okay? If Athens has an interest in, in it, you have not transferred to the town of, because it's a, it's a claim deed, you haven't, you haven't transferred to town. Anything you don't want. And, and, it, it is the last minute. And, and, Robyn and I, I spent the whole weekend on it, not wanting to, but we had to get this thing done. And, and there is no harm in doing tonight, since we're not asking for a warranty, we're asking for a claim deed. If you don't own anything, we don't get anything. But that isn't a nullity. It is something.
I think the reason that I would say is because our attorney isn't here and we paid attorneys lots of money to, to, to help us.
You know how, you know how many hours we spent over the weekend to do it?
You made, you made that clear. You dumbass.
And why you guys weren't involved, I had no idea.
Okay. I, I, I think the good news is we're, we're getting somewhere. Um, however, to ask for some time to seek legal counsel, because that's what we have them for, I, I don't know that we're asking, you know, for much. So, Chris?
But you have legal counsel.
Larry already said to do it.
Well, Larry, actually.
With this version, I.
Can we have some, do you have a comment here, if anybody would like?
Chris Rattler's had a, like, the end panel.
I don't, you know, I know it's, it's a time-sensitive thing, but legally, because I've already gone through this process with themself last, Grafton still remains a board and about two make decisions up to June 30. Is what you have in here is you're going to have, in addition, you're still going to have the Grafton Board, you're still going to have the Athens Board, you're still going to have the Athens-Grafton Joint Board. And now, all you're doing is adding a transitional board to start making decisions to get ready for the new board. Grafton Board still is in existence, is, it has the power to make decisions until June 30. You don't have, it's not all of a sudden, Wednesday comes and all of a sudden the Grafton Board doesn't exist anymore. Grafton Board still holds its authority until June 30, and business can be conducted right up until that time.
So that's, that, you know, out of respect for the entire board, which I think would include, um, Athens as well as Grafton, for them to have the opportunity to look at it and knowing that we're still a board until June. I, I just, I wanted to let people know that Wednesday will be a big day, however, if, if, we'll have no bearing on this, from what I understand.
All I can tell you is the two attorneys say it has to be done now.
Actually, I will differ with you. And Larry, I, I, I get the emails. I spent most of today with Larry, just like I spent the last two weeks with Larry. And, and he would like us to do this urgently too, simply because, again, it's better for us to do it now than to do it later, especially if the new district is successfully formed, which I don't think it will be. The, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, Bill. I'm just saying that, again, on the pile of things we have to worry about, I am much more concerned about not knowing the legal status of what the operational control of the joint contract is. We may, in fact, have technical entitlement to the building, but the joint contract assumes our rights, that's why we operate as a joint contract board, and the person who, who is a lawyer himself and fairly nationally known, Steve Fein, was on, was the chair of the board when the joint contract was formed, formed it, as he was very clear tonight with me, with the understanding that properties were under the joint control and that put disposition of the properties, and that he would be prepared to object to any attempt by us to, to, to convey the property this evening. I need to find out if he's full of smoke or not, and I would like to find that out. A day or so isn't going to kill anybody, and I would like it.
What is, what is the downside of signing tonight?
So I need to, legal contract is very good.
If, if, if the challenge by either the, the new state or the Education Department or anything else, then it becomes an invalid lease. But at least you have it signed before the deadline of the joint meeting that's going to take place on the cap. And to me, I think that's very important, personally.
I, I asked that same question when they called me this afternoon, I was just on page and, and called you. And their response was, when I asked the same question, was, is that by signing any kind of lease, they said the school board could be violating at least three articles in the, in the Articles of Agreement. That's, you know, that's the answer I was given when I asked that question.
The Articles of Agreement aren't adopted, how is it a violation?
They said because technically it's, whether, it really doesn't matter, you know, what side of the fence you're on, technically it's still law. The, the, the direction that it's going is still law until, you know, if, whenever an injunction gets put on and stuff. So basically, that is law, so tech, so they said that's where we, if signing a lease tonight would violate that in three different articles. I don't know which articles.
I can help with that. The interim, this is, I, only, only reason I know any of this is because I was browbeat about it by the State Board of Education directly in Montpelier. And that is, that they told us that the chair and clerk of the Grafton School Board were on the interim school board, whether they wanted to be it or not, as of November. They said that the interim Articles of Agreement are in effect until they are modified, whether we like it or not. Therefore, technically, if they're right, I'm hoping they're not, but if they're right, that means that you're looking at officer of the new, of the new interim board, and either I or Ed, you can't figure out which, is another officer of the board, and we are operating under the interim Articles of Agreement until we agree to amend it.
Which one?
Which will be whenever. So that, that's, that's the issue here, is I can't, you know, I can't legally sign something that is, that I believe is illegal, and I believe that we might be. I've got attorney, my, the only attorney I've got, advocacy on the BAPCU says it is, you've got to at least pay attention to that. And I think it's worth knowing, it's also worth knowing, that as I said, Steve Fein, who was chair of the board when we did the joint contract, says to me, "You cannot convey this property on your own, it is under the," whether, no matter what the deed says, the joint contract says joint control of all the assets. So that's an issue. I need to at least find that, if that's right or not. And I can't find that out at 8 o'clock tonight. And I'd like to have that little bit of space.
Jack? And once again, I know, I know for a fact that the joint, as I said, I've been through all this, this nightmare for the past five years.
Me too.
Okay? And that's the difference between a true district and a joint district. The difference is, is that Grafton holds what they hold, Athens holds what they hold.
That's what I thought.
They do not share any kind of, the deed for Grafton is with Grafton, just like an Athens deed.
Do you think that's a problem?
I know 100% that's accurate.
Okay, doesn't speed get that wrong?
I can't imagine the voters of Grafton, and I would not be a voter to approve this, where they were going to give the school partly to, to, to the town of Athens. I just can't imagine that.
And that's why they created this joint kind of office. I always, in, 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 in the past, I've always looked at it, is when you're a joint, you're kind of living together, but you're not married, so if you ever want to be in separate ways, everyone can just say, pack up their stuff and go, you still own your own properties. It's, if, if that was the case, then this discussion would have been taken place a long time ago, if everyone was going to commingle their, their properties.
So, so we have the right to, the school, the school has the right to sell the building?
It's, it's, it's Grafton, it's, it's a Grafton property, it's a Grafton facility, like I said. That's the reason why they created joint contracts, because at one point, if it didn't work out, your kids could go back and go. if it didn't work out, your kids could go back to your school, your kids could go back to your school, no harm, no harm.
Yeah, anybody else have any comments here? Would I speak?
I think, come like you say, you're going to have an awful lot on the plate, and this is going to take a, a burnout, because so many other things are going to be up in the air and they're going to change. I think the town has voted that they want this to go through, and that they voted in November saying they want it signed tonight. So if all possible, the two options set, the attorneys have said both options are accessible, so choose one and vote tonight.
Any, any comment?
I agree with that.
I like the idea that you're moving tonight, and the idea of waiting puts you in a weaker position. You really should move to go through with this, and if someone objects later on, let them challenge you. You've, you've made a point by agreeing to this tonight, that you have a common sense of, of purpose, and I think that's really important.
Yeah, and my feeling is that you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow or the next day. Everybody's here tonight, you have a clear vote from the taxpayers, and I think it should be done tonight, even though I understand, you know, you would have qualms, but I think it should be done tonight too.
Back a couple of years ago, when I was on the school board, when the Athens school first got shut down, because a lot of kids, Stephen Fine was the chair at that point, and I know he did a ton of work on it, and unless something has changed, at that point, I'm not saying the superintendent is wrong, but at that point, that they could not take possession of that building over in Athens, because it was in the joint district at that point. Whether something has changed, that I don't know. And I know Stephen did a ton of work on it. He got property assessments, and we made him an offer to buy it and everything.
Bill? The issue was not, that was not the issue. The issue was, at that time, there was a penalty for the construction loan. That penalty for the construction.
Right.
Uh, gift is, is no longer there, and it doesn't exist. It's been repealed up until July 1st, 2020. So right now, that penalty doesn't apply.
But at the time, we were like to, to even, it was even talked about, at that point, it was talked about, well, maybe 2000 or whatever, and it was just by a simple vote of, of, of whichever town, majority, if they want to pull out of the district, and the building would go, would, would not go with them, because it was a joint building. And Athens was the top.
What we heard the other night, what we heard the other night from the people on the Grafton Board is, they wanted to do, they are tending to do the same thing that they can, if they're not too late. That's what they said. If I, am I wrong? Is that what they said? They're intending to do the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Athens is intending to do the same thing.
But Athens has been, the same objection was raised today about Athens selling the building on its own, for the same exact reason, which is the whole reason why.
And he's wrong.
Well, if the guy who developed the joint contract is wrong about the joint contract he developed, that could be, but I just know that I got to at least pay attention to this.
Okay, that'll be important.
I may be a vote in one, I may be one vote in minority on this, but Jen, I, as general principle, I don't like to vote to do something that I feel that is illegal. And I'm feeling very much that that's what I would be doing if I voted to approve this tonight without at least checking with folks.
But I, I agree with the, with the comments. The town voted to sell the school, and they voted to have the agreement tonight.
Yeah, authorize it.
Authorize it. If it's not, they're going to be disappointed that it wasn't done. And that, that's my. We need you.
I have just had these voters' remorse for voting for the second amendment, proposed to hold it after the first one, which said not to authorize the boards to talk about this, but that we'd like to buy the town, buy the school. That's what I believe the voters of this town meant today, talking about a lot of language of authorization, with the provision that we were going to do it tonight. And now we're talking, some people think it's illegal, some aren't going to tonight. So why are we here?
Why is 1622 gives you that authority? May authorize school board to enter, the, at a school district meeting, the electorate may authorize the school board to enter into leases of real property for more than three years, to purchase buildings or sites for school purposes, to locate and erect schoolhouses, and to sell and otherwise dispose of schoolhouses or sites for the sale. That's 16 DSA by 1622.
That was the reason why we had a question about whether or not we probably warrant this thing, because it didn't have that specific kind of language on the school district. Had to, for the town, very clearly, it didn't have it in the school district.
Yes, it did.
Okay, we have to make a decision. Do you have anything else? Do you question the school the same thing as, the same type of?
No. No, they trust us.
And what are they forcing to do?
They're, they're, they're hoping to block Act 46 with the, the help of the same attorney that, whose competency we kind of just questioned a minute ago, Steve Fine, in, who plans to make an appeal of an important part, specifically about the language of the joint contract being obviated by 46, and the fact that that's not legal under both state and federal law.
Well, sure, that may be the best.
That's, it's an interesting point, and this is where I disagree with you very much, Jen.
Okay.
As much as I love you, I despise Act 46.
That's wonderful to know, though.
Act 46 is incredibly poorly written, if you read it, which is why there's so many legal opinions. The legislature did a terrible job of writing it. And depending on who you talk to at the state, we joined the joint district in November, possibly last July, and they already own the building.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a giant mess. But, one thing, as much as we want to subvert this whole Act 46 process until it is legally sorted out and modified, using this real estate transaction as a pawn to stop that process for three towns, I understand where we're coming from, but I don't, I don't think that is the best thing for the voters or the kids in Grafton, um, when we have this to go forward with. I would not, there's plenty of valid reasons people are presented for not signing a lease tonight, but to use this real estate transaction to try to subvert Act 46, I don't think is right.
I don't think we're trying to subvert it, we're just trying to put a little leverage to picture one of the negative consequences is avoided.
I, I, I think, I think, I think you, I think you imply by putting the five in there, I think you imply that you are trying to.
46 does not have anything in it about closing schools. If you talk to any of the bureaucrats up there, they will tell you over and over again they're lying, but tell you over and over again that this has got nothing to do with closing schools. This provision effectively takes them at their word and says, see what we have done, we have taken you at your word, therefore, that's part of the legitimacy here, is we're saying, because you've said that it's not, you should have no objection.
But we're having this discussion separate from Act 46.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
That's what I mean, so don't, I don't think we should base anything to do with this sale on Act 46.
Point of view, if we, if we move this to a vote, are we moving, we're in two, we're in a joint meeting, we're going to make two separate votes. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Grafton Select Board enter into the, accept the lease written by Robin Stern.
Robin Stern.
Stern, sorry.
Could we have Stern?
Stern.
I didn't get the motion. Josh paid a motion to rule that the Select Board accept Robin Stern's version of the lease, and Alan, and Alan Stern. Do we have any other discussion? Do you have a vote, all in favor of accepting the motion that we accept Robin's lease?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we accept Robin's lease.
Are legal entitlements are going to be subject to this? Yeah, maybe one against the other by removing that penalty. I would much rather the court would play more possibly an illegal meeting than an illegally won meeting about an illegal lease.
Well, the lease is going to be in town, presumably, in theory, but okay. And probably is.
Right, so we can, we need to sign it and then have the state.
We can remove the provisional, but they want to sign it.
The town wants it.
The town really wants you guys to do this. Somebody please make the motion. I will move that we sign, what is it, Robin's?
Chair and I, first on this thing.
Robin's firm, Robin's, um, the lease as projected to us by the town. I second you. Here we're at.
I, I, I again would say that the other version, the second one, looks better, and is less, is less problematic legally, but I appear to be in minority on this, so I'm a little perturbed.
I have a procedural question. What happens if we vote two to two? We don't have a big number?
That's right.
Well, maybe you should vote and see how, if the numbers. If it's not true, if it's not due to do, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, then we might go back to the other version. Uh, yeah, poll questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And there you go. But, but one day, just because I can get it better, there you go. So it's three, one on our side, so you're going to get a poll.
And if you, if you look at the state, we're authorized to, to have you sign, and Joe to sign, uh, to shoot the documents. Kim, are you here? Kim's here, and she's going to authorize the second question.
Yeah, Jen, um, I just, I feel that, in all the respects to both sides, I understand what you're doing, but as a superintendent, I need to make a public note for the records that I can't support anything being signed tonight, knowing that there's going to be, could be any possible legal ramifications to go forward. So it's all the respect from both sides, as a superintendent, I can't support the board stance, or the Select Board stance on that. Not that I don't understand what you're doing, but as I signed on to follow law, and if I go against that, my license would be outstayed, so I just needed to make on public record that, it's, it's with the utmost respect, but I can't support the signing over to the school, to the town. So, thank you.
Well, are you here, Kim, somewhere?
Do we have to, have some kind of motion to sign the purchase and sale as well?
We can do this a decent tonight, probably.
If we're going to sign a lease on a building.
I don't think so. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, was there, you need a motion to sell the building?
You need a motion to sell, you need to propose.
So, so somebody make a motion that, they need to make a motion first.
Is there very specific wording that from the?
Don't just make a motion.
Sold the building to the town.
Building and land.
Uh, yeah, building grounds to the, of the Grafton School District, to the town of Grafton, for the fee of, for the price of $1 and direct, it's not authorized, so direct the chair to sign on our behalf, if you authorize it, I have discretion.
I will second that motion, Jack. If that was a motion.
Yes. Do you pause? By the way, the clerk is going to keep the record of this.
Fantastic.
All right. So, I'll, I'll call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's done. Now, we need to motion on outside to accept, to accept you. Somebody want to make that motion?
You're offering to buy, to authorize you to, or direct you to sign on their behalf?
Yeah. I have directed to sign. Okay, so you made it, you said it? Yeah. Uh, any question? All in favor? Aye? Any votes? Okay. Shall we sign? Kim, do you want me to, you have one, you have a topic to sign?
It would be useful if we had, or please, the, of the lease back, the, signing firm with this, so I wouldn't mind looking at that part as well. Should we, you, the situation, you feel okay with that? That you will offer, Joe? That you're going, before we do make sign, that you are going to offer to lease back to the, to the Grafton and its successors, the land and property of Grafton Elementary School for a price of $1 a year, uh, $1 a month, uh, per the, $1 a year. $1 a year, subject to the provisos of the, uh, of, of the lease.
You guys, if you're in favor?
Are you thinking of signing that, or are you?
I, you guys, maybe the chair, I, I'm, I'm fine.
Just keeps your, your dollars per hour down.
A little bit too hard.
Oh, perfect.
The statute rules, I think we made a statement.
For the seagulls, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Grafton Select Board enter into a lease agreement with the Grafton School District, at amounts of $1 per year for the Grafton School.
From the proviso.
No, there's underwriters, for the provisos and lease agreements.
Leave out the 99 years. For the proviso, at least.
For the proviso, at least.
All in favor? All right, any votes?
Okay, then I move to the, I move that the, uh, that the Grafton School District, uh, sign, uh, agree to and sign the lease agreement as developed by Robin Stern. No, no, we, we agreed to sell, we agreed to, to do the lease mark, so we can do that. So I'm moving that we sign the lease agreement being offered by, by the town of Grafton to the School District of Grafton and its successors.
We did, we did that first.
We did the sell.
Only did the sell.
Yeah, yeah, I have to do that one. Yeah, you can't, you can't lease a building you own.
I agree.
All right, so all?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
And then, and then we direct you to sign on our side. Someone have a pen for Jack and?
Bill, can you make, can you, um, a couple people asked me when they would know, so I said they could check with, maybe the coast, uh, something on the board or something.
That's the second one.
Or put it in the town report, that, I mean, the town website, that the lease was signed, okay? I, I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do. I will, I will get all those documents, Kim, this is recorded.
So that, that you go to lease that.
Yeah, I'll put them on there. Okay?
We have motion.
Yeah, we need them all. Well, actually, can you adjourn, I'm signing, can I sign in and adjourn?
We're authorized to sign, we'll say, yeah.
Okay, so then I need a motion to adjourn.
We need to, because the.
All in favor? Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Thank you, Jen. Thanks, guys. Thanks very much.
Yeah, take it easy.
Okay, thank you, everybody.